Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September ninth Muscatine School District Board of Education Meeting. Madam Secretary, can you please take call and help us determine, determine, determine the call, please?
Yes. Directors Conner.
President.
Cooney.
President.
DeBeet.
President.
Leroux.
President.
Phillips.
President.
Schneider.
President.
Schur.
President.
Our call is present.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by Stacy Olson's sixth grade class from Madison School. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
High School Board.
Thank you. What a treat. Thank you. So would like to start our meeting by welcoming all our visitors and media representative. It's always good to have a big crowd here. So with that, we move into the student of the, yeah, the student school board representatives report. And I would like to take the opportunity first to welcome Kayla again. Kayla served on the board from last year and she's back as the senior now class representative. And McKenna, welcome again. We are very glad to join us around the table. Thank you and take it from here, please.
Hello and welcome to another MHS school year. We hope that is going to be a great year. Starting off with what has happened already in the school year, student council held elections over the new leadership board and the president is Caitlin Hewitt. The vice president is Oliver Schmidt. Senior president, class president is Colin Millage. The junior president is our very own McKenna Shoemaker. And the freshman and sophomore classes president is Abigail Schnell. Other things that student council has accomplished recently is we and the teachers in the Muscatine High School ran New Musky Day. It went very successful. Student council kids helped kids find their classes and hyped up the kids with cheers this year. And it didn't rain on the photo, which is always great. And I would like to thank all the teachers and student council members that made this New Musky Day possible. If you didn't know what New Musky Day was, it's just the first day of the year where only freshmen come and we help all the kids find their classes. Student council released the homecoming theme of Disco Fever and the theme days are yet to be released. So stay, so stay, follow us on Instagram. The major events are the dance on October 5th at eight. Powder Puff is on Wednesday, October 7th at seven. And the tailgate is at four thirty to six thirty on Tuesday. And the movie Under the Stars is at seven Monday on September 30th. And the parade coronation is on Thursday, October 3rd at six. And finally, the senior march and wall and then the football game is on Friday, the fourth at seven. And so a bit of information on these things, we obviously have the homecoming dance and then Powder Puff is the female football game where the juniors and seniors play each other. The senior march and senior wall is something that people in the community might not know about. This is the march of the seniors where they march downtown to the riverfront. And the wall is a wall in the building where all the seniors place their handprints and sign their names next to their handprints as like a symbol of achievement and we've made it this far. So, and finally, all other clubs start tomorrow when the musky time starts. So. Fall kickoff this year had a large turnout. We announced fall sports followed by a football scrimmage. And this year's student council announced the homecoming theme at the kickoff as well. The marching band has their first competition next Saturday at Mount Pleasant. Their show theme this year is Corpse Bride and drum majors include Vanya Marmal, Maya Simpson, Matthew Spees, and Mackenzie Wilkes. The football team won twenty-one to nineteen on Friday night and there will be a home game this Friday against Iowa City West. The student section theme is Neon Out. The Muscatine girls swim team placed second overall on their home invitational last Saturday. Their next meet is tomorrow. At the last varsity conference volleyball game, Muscatine beat Davenport Central in three sets. The freshmen played tonight and Thursday and have their home tournament this weekend. The sophomore slash JV and varsity teams play at Davenport West tomorrow and our JV team has a tournament at Union High School on Saturday. The boys cross country went to Crowe Creek PV's home course last Saturday and this race is the hardest course. Aiden Bullock was sixth overall in the freshman sophomore. Additionally, these four runners had a personal best at Crowe Creek. Talen Becker, Kyle Brewer, Dane Coolant, and Aiden Bullock. And then one final thing on sports, the girls cross country also went to Crow Creek, which is easily the hardest race of the year. And there was eighteen, oh wait, they did very well in Crow Creek. Everyone, almost everyone dropped two minutes from their past time, which is crazy because Crow Creek is extremely hard. And then the next meet on Thursday is going to be one of the biggest meets with eighteen teams attending there. There is also a new phone policy at the high school. Throughout our classes, kids have been respectful on the new phone policy and teachers have been doing a good job enforcing and explaining the new policy. Okay. And then one final concern that the student body has is the locker room AC, the locker room still don't have AC and it's kind of toasty in there because, you know, there's no way to get air from the outside into the locker rooms. And we were having, experiencing like ninety degree weather a few weeks ago and we're going to experience it again this week. So that is the major concern of the student body.
Thank you. Any board members have anything to share with them? Okay. Thank you. Great reports. Thank you. Yeah, moving forward, we move into our next item, which is Citizen Speaks. If anyone in the audience wants to address the board, please step to the podium, state your name and address. You will have three minutes to talk. Per Iowa code, we cannot respond or engage in any discussion during the board meeting. But as I always say, saying that we cannot engage during the board meeting, that doesn't mean you cannot reach out to us outside the board. You can call us, you can stop us at IV if you see any of us, you can email us, talk to us, reach out to us. Anybody would like to address the board at this moment? Okay. Well, thank you. So we move into the next item on our agenda, which is the special recognition, the Muscatine Agriculture Program. I'm sure some heard that named the National Agricultural Educators Association Region Three Outstanding Agriculture Education Program Award. So basically, I call on Clint.
Yeah, so I want to bring up Dave Tomitich, Sam Paul, Dalen Garrett, and Ashley Weeby. Alexa Coobes is another of our high school ag teachers and couldn't be with us tonight. But first, I just want to say, so the ag program and our ag educators were recognized as the Iowa Agricultural Educators Association Ag Program of the Year, which to my, what I've been told, we'd never had before. But we, we hadn't, Muscatine hasn't won the Iowa one, correct? So first time for Iowa. Then that, yes. So that puts us in the running for Region Three, which is Iowa, Nebraska, North and South Dakota.
Minnesota.
Minnesota and Wisconsin. And we were recognized as ag program of the year for all of those as well and will be representing, our program will be represented at the national level. So we are, we wanted to bring them here tonight to recognize we have an outstanding ag program. It's the largest in the state. The opportunities for kids are amazing, so wanted to bring them here and kind of let you guys take over and, and share some things and I'm sure board, if you have questions.
Hello, my name is Elsie Lewis and I'm the president of our Muscatine FFA chapter. I've been involved since I was a freshman and most of us up here has as well. I'm involved in several of our FFA contests every year. It's a great opportunity and our advisors are great offering opportunities for everyone in this program.
Hi, my name is Addie Wagon. I'm serving as one of the chapter reporters this year. This program has done so much for me. I joined my freshman year and I've really flourished in the agricultural program. The advisors contribute so much to this and I have been involved in showing livestock at the county and state fair. I have participated in several speaking events, my favorite being Extemperaneous. Many team events like sales and I'm just, I'm so appreciative for all of the experiences they have granted and I've been able to experience.
Hi, my name is Elodie Gossin. I'm serving as our chapter reporter this year. I've done several contests, which include poultry, livestock judging, horse judging, and many more, like Addie speaking events, one of my favorites being Creed speaking. A lot of these teachers put a lot of time outside of school, in school, just to help us grow as a program. Thank you.
My name is Saxby Stein. I'm a treasurer this year for our FFA and I was part of, I've been a part of it since I was a freshman. I've been on the meets judging team, the ag sales team, the parliamentary procedure and the conduct of meetings team. I would just like to thank our advisors for all they've done for us.
My name's Kayla Lewis. I'm a senior. I'm a secretary and I've shown pigs, done ag sales, poultry judging last year, and it's a great experience and our ag teachers are awesome.
My name is Dalen Garrett. I'm the new advisor here in Muscatine. I'll be at the middle school this year working with Miss Weeby. Like I said, I'm a new advisor this year, but I'm definitely not new to the program and without these three behind me, there's no way that I would be here, especially in the position and in this town without them. And our just chapter has proven to grow me as well as all of these guys as well. So I love to work for it every day.
I'll go ahead and go. I got, I have a side, side thing for the, for the board today too, just so you guys, to keep you updated. Kim and Mr. Christopher are both on our ag learning center board. It's one of the opportunities that our kids are, have been provided. And so one other thing we want to share with the board, if you haven't seen it, Tony did, did a little blurb the other day, but our ag center board and the friends of FFA are raising money for a new addition onto the ag center. And as we close it on the final amount, we just got a $25,000 pledge that will match the next $25,000 that we raise. So right now, we're in the bidding process. The bids are going to be to me by tomorrow morning. And so right now, we have a handful of bids that the group will sort through and we're closing in on that final number and with the matching funds deal there, we should be moving forward here fairly soon. So expect some information, probably on some groundbreaking, some of those things. With the addition of seventh and eighth grade also coming to the ag center, our goal is to have all of the co-op projects in one location and make us more efficient, as well as provide opportunities for students that are closer. For the people that don't realize, our ag program's like ninety-five percent urban. We don't have that many kids that are coming from, from an ag background, yet at the same time, we're graduating fifteen to twenty kids per year going into ag-related careers, so.
Yes, Clint kind of had said, you know, we haven't really won this award before for the Iowa level. I'm pretty positive that we are the first winner from Iowa to win at the regional level. So this is kind of a neat deal, not only for us and for our community, but also kind of the state of Iowa. So it's, it's been a neat deal to see what kind of publicity this award has brought to our kids and our program and our community. We just want to thank everybody for the support. It's been fantastic. And I didn't introduce myself. I'm Ashley Weeby and I teach at the middle school along with Miss Garrett. And I think a few of these guys actually lied. They did not start their freshman year. They actually started in seventh and eighth grade with some ag impact and CSI contest, but nobody wants to remember their middle school years, so we'll forgive it.
Dave, Dave Tomitich, I guess somebody would say I'm the senior one. Somebody else is trying to ask what year and I don't think I remember those things, but very fortunate to be part of this program. We have a wonderful team. Without a doubt, our goal as teachers and the thing we try to pass on to the students is what progress do we make each and every day? How do we go ahead and try to make ourselves better? That is our goal as instructors and that's, I think, this award and some of those things show that, is that it is, whether it's the Dave Fowlers or a whole bunch of other people, how do we continue to make progress? And the school board and the community has been very supportive in doing that. And I'll just tell kind of one quick one, that just really, I'll say it, as a person that's taught in the district and taught for quite some time, you know, like this year we won the state ag mechanics contest. And, you know, we've been so fortunate in many, many areas, but I will tell you, it just really excites me when we also get another population of young people involved, because sometimes I'll say it, some of those kids really probably aren't going to get up and speak in front of somebody, but this program has got something for everybody. And we were welding at the high school last night at, you know, seven thirty or each one of those things and is what, you know, was really pretty intriguing is we had them weld together like a cylinder thing and we tapped it and put an air chuck on it and put it in water, just like real life. Does this actually hold pressure? Does this actually do what it's designed to do? That's what makes our program very good, is that the kids get an opportunity to actually see if it's real. Thank you, thank you for your support very much.
I need to say a little something. I have actually helped when they've gotten ready for going to these state meetings and stuff. You guys as a whole, helping these kids, it's, it's totally amazing seeing them jumping all over the place, going from room to room and this or that, just to help get the kids ready. And the kids themselves, the amount of, of leadership and expertise that you end up getting out of all this, no matter what you end up doing in life, I give you the best credits in the world. It's a very wonderful program, so thank you.
I would also like to comment, those of you who know me, this is dear to my heart. My kids went through the program. I was there with Fowler when we started the whole thing. And as from the teacher's standpoint, when I taught at West, it's amazing how involved those kids get and how little they know, you know, they don't even want to touch an animal, they don't, it smells, blah, 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 blah. And they just come so far and it's, it's just a great hands-on program that meets the needs of so many kids that I think we're very fortunate to have it and to have the support of, support of the community and also of our advisors, so thank you. And the students, of course.
Being a senior, didn't want to put a year on it. I think it was eighty-nine that Fowler took us to the Kansas City of the National Convention. You were awarded for your sheep sharing business, yep, on the national stage. But, you know, started a great program. You guys have definitely carried that further and farther than probably a lot of us could have imagined. You've done a fantastic job and great representation of our city, our state, and thank you for everything you do.
And I'll give a little bit of, I'll give a little bit of memory too, because I looked at my yearbook and I think there was five guys standing there in a photo. That was it, of what there was. Okay, I'll say it, it was nineteen seventy-three. So it's been a few years and so to see, oh my gosh, how much of a program you guys have now and the amount of women that are in this program, it just gets to me every time. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to say anything?
I've got a couple of comments before we wrap up, but go ahead, John.
Yeah, it's the same thing. On behalf of the board, we really thank you for taking this program to the next level, I would say. Students like that, our future leaders, I mean to have you working with them is unbelievable and it's hard even to describe. So thank you for everything. Thank you.
And again, just in closing, as I think about the program and our outstanding educators here, something that always, and I appreciate Sam, that stat, about ninety-five percent of our students in the FFA and the ag program don't live on a farm, right? And, and when you think about the opportunities that our kids are getting because of this program, it's phenomenal. If you get a chance, and I know we, they invite you every year to the end of the year banquet, and I go every year really because I, the very end, I really, I do enjoy hearing our ag teachers talk about the seniors and listening to the places they're going. They're going on to engineering programs at Iowa State or vet programs or welding or forestry or you name it. There are so many great opportunities for our kids that they get provided through this program. And, you know, again, when we think about, you know, what is our goal as a, as a school district and it's preparing kids for the next step, whatever that is. And this program, I think, is just an outstanding representation of what we are trying to accomplish and we're very fortunate to have the educators here running that program for us. So thank you. I think we want to get a picture of, of all of you in front of the board here, right, Tony? I'll let you kind of.
Hey, so could you keep an eye on your email? Second week of March, there is going to be our, is going to be our banquet again. You guys will all get emails. We'll have Daphne pass that on, so.
Okay, moving forward with our agenda, the next item is the Board Targets Goals Report. Item A, student will graduate prepared for post-secondary options. Item B, Muscatine schools will utilize resources effectively and equitably. And under that, we have the District Environment Committee presentation. And item C, the students will learn in a positive and supportive environment. So we go back now to the presentation and.
And it's going to be me. You're going to get to hear a lot from me tonight. And we'll leave some space at the end for some of our committee members to take questions and provide some feedback as well. But it was just important as we kind of start the school year, the work that's been happening over the last couple of years, but last year specifically around this District Environment Committee, we've been kind of updating you as we go along, but wanted to kind of bring some things together for you here tonight. So I'm presenting and trying to drive this at the same time, so bear with me here. So really, this all starts around our daily desired experiences and something we've been doing that survey for the last several years. And again, really focused on for our students, for our staff and our families, making sure people feel heard and valued and, and a part of the conversation and we're listening and really focused on improving the environment for everyone, every day that they step into our schools. So again, remembering that this is the foundation of that work and will continue to be. So the District Environment Committee started last year as a result of, as we finished the survey last October, we, we developed a district level committee. There is also a committee at every building within the district. And each building has a representative on the District Environment Committee. It's a building administrator. It's a support staff and certified staff. The support and certified staff is decided by the building. So the administrator is kind of the automatic and the building really decides who those other people are. And we started our first meeting in February. We met in February, April, May, and as we were, and I'll show you some of the work that had been done, but we still weren't finished in May. So we had a group of volunteers come back in in June and we spent a couple of hours really building out some action plans based on what every building really brought in terms of the conversation that they had at a building level and then the conversations that we had as an environment team. So at the start of each one of those meetings, we always go through and just talk about the role that each person plays on that committee. They represent the building on that district team. We expect everyone to attend and actively participate and that happens at all of our meetings. They're there in as, in as an advisory role, so we want to hear from them, engage in the conversation and development and in implementation of goals as we think about the daily desired experiences. And we also talked about, and our last meeting here was last week, you know, again, they are a conduit of communication between that, our district level and that district committee and their building. So we're going to, and I'll, I'll have a kind of a timeline of next steps, but our next meeting is going to be October thirtieth. So in that time, buildings are going to be, and they are expected to have building level environment team meetings. And there's a representative from the district committee that's on that building team. They're expected to go back to that building team and share, here are the things we're working on at a district level. When they come back October thirtieth, they're going to share out, here are the things we've been working on in our building as we again, continue to, to build out action plans and look to improve on that daily desired experience. So again, this is a long list of people. I think when we're all here, it's close to fifty people that are involved in this. And again, not that you have to remember every single name, but just know, there are a lot of people representing all aspects of our district on this committee. And we have some representatives here tonight and I'll introduce them here in a little bit. So the first meetings after we presented the, the DDE results to the board, we shared those results from last October with buildings. Buildings, every building went through and looked at their results and the district results, had conversations about, you know, what are the things that they saw in those results, what they saw in the comments, and really started to identify what's. um, and really started to identify what's building-level work and what's district work. Then they came to our, our district environment committees, um, and they shared that information out. Then we started going through a process of really taking all of those building conversations and kind of pulling them together. What are the common threads? What are the common themes, um, that we hear through all of these conversations? And as I've shared with you and, uh, before, it, it's communication, professional development, and behavior. And so then we started a process, and that's really where we were working, uh, in April, May, and June, on taking those three priorities and building out some action plans. And I will tell you, um, it's not easy work. Because when you think about building those district-level action plans, you know, as our, our groups were talking about communication, what communication means for one person is very different from someone else. For some people, communication is too much. For some, it's not enough. So, how do we create some action steps that really help move us forward at a district level? Understanding that our buildings are also talking about communication, a lot of these, um, similar pieces as well. So, what I wanted to make sure is we brought some of that work to you tonight. Um, and what we shared with, um, the whole committee last week was kind of the finalized, um, action plans. Um, and what I want to make sure I, I share with you, so each area has SMART goals and things we're working through and, and kind of checking off. But I want to read some of the summary statements for each one of these areas. So, for communication, it's ensuring timely, clear, consistent, systematic processes for all communication. That's kind of the focus of that work. So, we really developed those summary statements first, and then started building action plans off that, including, you know, timelines and, and next steps. Some of those you'll see with different timelines, ones, some of the stuff already happened in August. Other things are, are by the end of October, and some of the things are a little bit longer goals that we'll take as we work through the year. For professional development, that summary statement is the district will develop clarity around comprehensive school improvement plans and targeted professional development for all groups. So, again, a lot of the things we're hearing from our, all of our different groups is like, professional development is important. And we've done a good job of including people, uh, over the last, uh, couple of years. Uh, but how do we do a better job of that? So, you know, what you'll see in these is really looking at processes for getting feedback that we share with the building on what's working well with professional development and what else do you need? So, a, um, a survey was sent out to all staff. That data's being collected. At the end of this week, we're going to have more professional development on Thursday and Friday. We're going to send out, um, feedback forums that they're going to collect. What went well, what, what can we do as we look for kind of the next level of learning or ways to improve? And then the Behavior Action Plan, that summary statement is by educating staff and students, we will promote positive behavior and language in our schools and community. These steps will provide pre-K twelve consistency in improving all aspects of our school by reducing time spent on behaviors. And again, you'll see kind of the short-term and longer-term goals in there. Um, and a lot of this is about, um, consistency and, and fidelity to that. So, we've presented that, um, that district behavior matrix to the board. That's a part of this work, right? Ensuring that everyone sees that, that our students are seeing that. Uh, and you'll notice that one of the very first things with that is those, uh, behavior expectations were shared with all staff, uh, at the start of the school year. Again, not just to certain staff, not just to teachers, but to everyone. So, everyone understands, uh, this is, these are the expectations and these, this is how we follow through with those pieces. And again, then presenting that to students and, uh, getting that information out to parents now, and, and to the community. Now, in the registration process this year, we linked those, that behavior matrix, so it's in there. Now, did every parent look at that? Probably not. But again, the, as many ways as we can get that information out in front of people, we want to do that. So, again, what you see for each one of these areas is, um, is that summary statement, some, some SMART goals around that. Uh, and again, when we come back, uh, on October thirtieth, we're going to start digging into, and so what they spent some time on this last meeting is what's already been accomplished and what are some of the next level of work? So, when they come back, uh, October thirtieth, they're going to share what's happening in their buildings and progress in their buildings. And then we're going to start digging into moving these indicators forward, kind of that next, uh, level of work. Which moves us into kind of the timeline. Um, each year we do, so the very, very first year we did this, we did the survey in the spring. And I think all of you understand that in the spring, there's just a lot going on. There's a lot of surveys. There's just a lot of stuff out there. So, uh, moving into the next school year, we started, uh, giving the survey at the end of October. And so this will be the third year that we're doing it at the end of October. So, that'll go out, uh, right at, right about that time. Uh, we'll be having that district committee, uh, meeting on the thirtieth. And so it takes a while to, you got to have it out there a while to make sure you get it, you know, enough people responding to it. And we send out reminders, and Tony does a good job of, of sending that back out. And then it takes, um, some time to kind of finalize, review, pull all of that information together. And also, November and December are pretty busy months. So, that's why in January is when we bring that, um, the, kind of the results to you, uh, as a school board. Um, we'll share that with the District Environment Committee, uh, in January as well. And then all of the buildings will have access to their data. And then really, we're just going back through that process again. What, you know, what are we hearing in the feedback? Where are we at in our results? How does that align to where we're at in our action plans? What adjustments do we make? Or maybe we don't need to, you know, based on what we're getting back, it's just continue, uh, in that same direction. So, uh, as I share with the, the District Environment Committee, it's a continuous improvement process. It's getting feedback from staff, students, and families, identifying what are the common themes and building action plans around that. Again, related to all that work, this summer, as you know, we presented that to you as a board. Uh, we had building leadership team training for two days in June, which talked about who's on your instruction team? Who's on your environment team? Who's on your building leadership team? What are their roles? How does that function, right? Um, and then in August, we had two days of environment team training for each building. Who's on that team? What are you expected to do? How does that, you know, where are all the pieces in that? And what work will you be working on this year? So, this is kind of an alignment of all of those conversations around what we're trying to accomplish with improving our environment and improving the results around that DDE for our staff, uh, students, and for our families. So, I moved through that pretty quickly. Um, tonight I have Randy Davison, Jamie Schroder, and Erin Meyer here. So, I'm going to have you guys come up. Not that you have to present anything, but as the board, as you have questions, I certainly want, um, our, some of our, uh, staff that are involved in this to be able to respond to some of the questions or provide feedback that they have. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the board to ask questions.
I guess I could start with, uh, just from the standpoint from thinking back to when we started all of this, and it would just look like such a daunting task, although at the same time, we knew we needed to do something. And so I have to applaud you guys on, on, uh, how that's come along. And if I remember correctly, this past time, we've had quite of, should, pardon me. We had a better response from like, not only teachers, but other staff in which to be able to do, correct?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions, of course, um, about the SEL curriculum that's going to be purchased. Has that been piloted? Is that a program?
I can't.
Did the SEBAS pilot that? Is that the program that they did, or the counselors, or?
Becky, do you want to come up and? See, you guys are already off the hook. Erin, Erin actually is one of our SEBA leads and now down at Franklin, so I know she could probably speak to that too.
Yes. So, last year in the spring, our elementary counselors and our junior high counselors piloted the Character Strong Tier One, um, SEL curriculum. So, the pilot was at the end of the year, which you were in the classroom. So, um, this fall, we have implementation. So, our elementary school counselors are using the Character Strong Tier One curriculum for their week, bi-weekly guidance lessons. And then our ECs, used to be called SEBAs, now they're environment coaches, we call them ECs. They too are a part of that process with implementation, um, and have access to the Character Strong Tier One materials and resources.
Does that include like behavior stuff as well, or is it just more social?
Yep. Be kind, be well, be strong. So, there's outcomes in those three areas. So, it's all around, social, emotional learning. Yes.
I think, and I'll just jump in on this, Kim, too, because I think, um, it's important to see how the whole thing, again, we, we've had these conversations with the board. It fits under the MTSS structure. So, behavior is a critical, important, uh, that's a, an important piece to that. That's where that behavior matrix sits. So, students have consequences for behavior. What the SEL curriculum does is how do we work proactively with students on the front end and after that, right? So, it's the learning work that occurs on both sides of that. But behaviors are still going to happen, and there are still going to be consequences. So, it's how those pieces, you can't just have consequences without the learning pieces on either end to really help kids improve. And so I think it, it, kind of all of those pieces fit together.
So, is there a component then for teach, like, let's say there's a specific issue in a classroom? You know how things come up in different groups, but like a component for teachers to extend on the SE, on this curriculum? Use, you know what I'm saying? Am I making sense? Lesson plans for teachers to further delve into some of the issues.
But, um, one of the themes in the training that we got-
Up, up to the mic, please.
One of the examples, sorry, um, was like a tree of choices for students. So, um, I think that whole thing goes through, um, you know, is this a big problem or is it a small problem? So, it's giving students, you know, that agency to be able to work through that on their own, which is what we want, right? We don't want teachers to have to continue to put out fires. We want students to be able to do that in themselves, right? To build that capacity. Um, and so I think, you know, may, maybe Becky can speak a little bit more to the next piece of that. Um, I've done a little bit of diving into that, and there is a component for, you know, like restorative conversations. And that's one of those topics that, what do you do when, you know, it's after, right? After that situation occurs, what do you do? And that's that reteaching moment. And I think that's sort of what, um, the environment coaches are going to be working with teachers to kind of connect those pieces. So, counselors, this is my understanding, again, I just started this role. Um, but counselors are really there to help equip students, to give them that agency so that they can be sort of the empowered ones figuring this out. And then, when teachers are not able to know what to do, environment coaches kind of step in and help them with those restorative conversations of, hey, you know, we could have said it differently. Or, you know, I noticed you were frustrated. Can you tell me about that to help them work through that? So, I would say that's a big part of when we talk about behavior and the teaching component that hasn't necessarily been there, if that makes sense.
Right. I'm, I'm just curious, is there, are there actually lessons? I'm, I don't know. I'm not sure I'm saying this correctly again, but lessons and things that follow up from counselors and, uh, what are you called now? Environmental, any-
ECs, environment coaches.
If counselors and ECs can return to the room with follow-up lessons if the teacher, if the classroom teacher for sees, then maybe they need a little extra.
Yes. There are resources.
Needs a little extra in this or that.
Yes.
So, will that be the responsibility of the environmental coaches and the counselors have the curriculum so they can bring in more lessons?
Correct. And this is just tier one. So, this year with the year-two implementation of our CKLA, social studies new adoption, and math, to add a new SEL curriculum onto the teacher plates would be a little bit much. So, we started on purpose with our school counselors. So, getting into the classroom, teachers are in there during, when they have their, um, their bi-weekly counseling sessions with the, the large group classes. So, they're hearing the same terminology. If there's any resources that they would want, yes, just like Erin said, they can have access to the tools. This is just year one. We started now next year. If there is, um, you know, we would have to talk with our classroom teachers if this is something that they would like to. It's, it's pretty, I would say, user-friendly. Um, all of our teachers do a morning meeting, and it infuses all of the, all of the components that they are teaching to and modeling. So, it blends very well. But this year, to add a new curriculum that they would need to learn was just not in the cards.
I don't think they need any more curriculums at all.
Right. But when you say, oh, now Character Strong, yeah, you just have to be careful of that.
The ECs and the counselor?
Yeah.
I guess what I'm asking is are the ECs and the counselors responsible for this curriculum? Even if it needs extensions and stuff within the classroom, the teachers aren't going to have to develop more lessons to go with this.
No. And actually, as we look into Character Strong, they have more resources than we've even tapped into. They have tier two, tier three, and they just added another behavior. So, there's a lot of, we could go real deep. We're just right here, right now.
I mean, I'm trying to, I guess, make it, I feel it's important that the teachers don't have too much more, but that they have access to integrating it.
Yep.
And one of you guys might be able to help on this area. When I'm thinking about how you're talking about, because in the classroom, it also dawned on me that there's other areas that kids have behavioral, behavioral problems. And so like, say, um, on, on the bus, they're not there on the bus very long, but when they're on the bus, that can be, you know, a problem. Or cafeteria, the hallways, you know? So, does any of these kind of components, how was that handled?
So, I always speak specifically for like Madison. I'm a sped para at Madison. Um, and so I am on the environment team as well as the District Environment Committee. And the way that we've kind of delegated, which I've, speaking with some of the people at the meetings, it seems pretty similar. Um, the like certified teacher that was nominated to come, she kind of handles like talking to the admin from the building and the certified teachers. And then I reach out to like all support staff. So, whether that be, um, the cafeteria staff or the bus staff, basically all the people that are considered, um, the like SCAP employees, I think that's what it is. I reach out to them and let them know like, hey, we have a meeting coming up. Just a reminder. Are there things that you want me to bring to the meeting? And then I also send them the follow-ups as well. So, we just kind of tackle it as a team.
And that's SCAP. That's our bargaining group for non-certified staff.
That's right.
Yep.
One of the quick questions that I have has something to do with the numbers. Uh, because as I look at the list of members, I noticed that all elementary schools has three people or three members from each one of them. And we know that some schools have more students than others. So, do you think some schools needs more than three, or why is three? I, I mean, I, I, what I'm thinking is, are we giving three to every school so that every school will have almost the same power into making those decisions? Or do we need to have more in some schools because they have more students and they need more people to help in this?
And I, I'll respond to that, and if anybody else wants to, uh, answer that too. But remember, their role is advisory. So, they're just, they're more of a, a conduit and part of the conversation. We, we did add, um, an additional teacher, uh, for the high school and, and junior high. So, there's a few more people there, um, but they are typically our largest buildings. So, it's not necessarily that, I don't see it as buildings are losing power at the elementary level because they only have two. Because we don't vote, necess, it's not like, okay, everyone raise your hand, vote on this. You know, that's, it's conversation, it's collaboration. And ultimately, their job is to bring that back, you know, to the building. I guess if anybody else wants to jump in on, that's kind of how I would respond to that, though.
And not your personal opinions, but what you hear from the groups and all that other activity. I was being a couple of years into this, it's great to see that it's spread across all the, all the buildings equally and the same program across all buildings. I'd like to see that. But are we seeing a better acceptance as a, or, or teachers seeing it as, and staff seeing it as a way to express their opinions to on their desired daily experience? And, and how is that, you know, building steam, this isn't just another program they're responsible to do every year, but it's actually finding value in it and investing in it more and more every year?
Matt, that's an easy throw to me. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll tell you, uh, it's a great night to be here on, uh, Ag Program is, uh, is a real connection to a lot of us sitting around this Ag table. So, we have a lot to celebrate here at this district with the Ag Program. Our facilities, our sporting facilities, just sent two of my girls that graduated to Iowa State University. Oh, gosh, I'm going to cry.
Who be Iowa?
I, well, I, I do have, I have two boys going through the district as well. Maybe they'll go to Iowa eventually. But, um, I guess what I, what I like about this process, this system that, uh, Mr. Christopher has put in place to help us get there- that Mr. Christopher has put in place to help us get there, is that we do have a voice. And us classroom teachers are still on the front line, okay? Like I said, I will be number one fan for the Muscatine Community School District. And we're great. I like to, and as you know, as a lifelong learner, we're always trying to do better. So this, this really gives us a chance to be honest in our deliveries. And I want to say that I appreciate that and being able to be a part of this team. So the folks at McKinley are working and we have a great start to the year. Do we have some things to do yet? Yes. And, and then sitting in this group of different educators at all levels gives you an idea of what the struggles might be at those other attendance centers. And gives us all common language as we move forward from the classroom to the building and all the way up. So anyway, great night to be here. I think, I know you're dad too, so. But anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Jamie.
Definitely not that tall. As somebody who served as a teacher on the committee last year at McKinley as well, I can just say that at that first meeting, it was a little bit tense, you know, because we're all coming in like, okay, what's going to happen, you know? Is anything going to get done? And, you know, you have that, right? And I think it's, it's good to have a little healthy skepticism. But I think by that second meeting, once we'd sort of gelled together, you could feel that there was a sense of hope in the room for the first time, I think, in a while. And I know, like, things just in our society have, have been kind of rough. And so it was good to feel that sort of coming together and that unity in something, you know, to, to pull together for kids in our community. And so that felt, felt really good.
And then just again, from the para perspective, I feel like it's been phenomenal being able to be on this committee. There definitely were some people on the team when we heard that this was an option, that were like, great, like it's just going to be admin or boards, like just making decisions for us again. But then we found out that there was an option for support staff to be involved as well. And that really changed the opinion on a lot of people about it. And I can say that I've never come to a meeting and had people be like, oh, well, she's just a para. Like it's been very helpful and everybody's really worked together. And it's nice to see that while people are skeptical maybe about some of the things, like they're all there because they want to make a positive change. And so it's nice to just be in that environment. Especially I'm a para currently, but I'm part of the grant program, I never remember what the initials are, to become a teacher. And so knowing that like, starting as a para and then hoping to teach eventually in the district, that like, the district is so committed to growing and bettering for not only the staff and students, but everyone in the community, like it's just phenomenal and really appreciated.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to say that all I asked is anybody who wants to come could come and talk tonight. So I didn't, I didn't try to stack the deck. And we really just, we want people to be a part of the process. And that, that goes back to how are we sharing results? When we talk about some of these things, it can't just be, you know, we're going to share it with our building leadership team, because that's not everybody in the building. It can't just be, here are our teachers, because that's not everybody in the building. Really, we need everyone, right, to make an impact with kids. Because again, it, it's those relationships across the board, whether it's stepping on the bus or in the cafeteria or in a classroom, wherever it is, it takes that whole team. So, you know, I know we're not going to, like, it's, it's not going to be a rocket ship to the, to the top here, but we're going to keep moving in this direction, getting feedback. And I think the hardest part, and I, and we talk about this with our principals too, is there's a level of vulnerability when we do this, right? We're going to get feedback that we don't want to hear. And I've shared, when those DDE results came back those first few years, I like, ugh, it was hard. Like I, I couldn't even look at all of them for the whole, like, I'd look at it for a while and then I'd have to shut it and I'd, I'd have to feel better after a while and come back and look at it again, because it's very pointed, right? But then through that, you start to hear the same, you know, you start to see some threads and like, how do we, how do we get better at this, right? How do we use this for growth? And I think, you know, again, what I would say is it's an investment. We've invested a lot of time and energy into this. And we are seeing some, some growth in those results. More people are responding to the survey, which tells you, right, that tells you something too. And, and we didn't, we had a lot more people, staff members, respond than ever before last year. And our, our numbers kind of flattened out, okay? They didn't go up, but they also didn't tank, which tells you that, again, we're, we're still growing, but people are responding. And it's not just the people who are really angry or really unhappy. It's, it's everybody, right? And the more we can get all those voices into the room in, in a variety of different ways, and people are going to feel like, I'm, I'm part of this process and I matter. And that's what we want.
Great work.
That question or comment was kind of similar to what I've been thinking over here. So I just hope that you guys feel that there's value in it and that you have something to take back to the building and that it's received. And that I think that you all have the tools as well to do it, because we've talked a lot about uniformity here in those three areas of focus as well. Like even as parents, we fill out the survey or in the schools and we see where some of those needs are. So I think we all share it. So if there's any way that we can help, or if you need something else, or maybe you're not feeling valued, let us know so that we can help. But everything seems to be connecting, at least from the presentations and what we're hearing with the MTSS and now this area of focus. So I'm really excited about it. I think it's good work.
I just want to say, I really appreciate all the work, because it does take a lot of work to get everybody's input. And I think the continuation of the DDE, the more people see that we're actually doing something with that survey makes it a lot more legitimate in their minds. And that will hopefully help with the honesty and, and people, even maybe hopefully more people actually saying, you know, what's going well and what's not. Just knowing that it's being looked at is a big plus. So thank you for all your work.
Yes. I appreciate helping me raise my children, because it's challenging in today's world. And that, when I think about all the sporting activities they went through, all the coaches, the school bus driver, those relationships, we have everybody in that, in that group that, I guess, at a certain point, giving us input on how to just be better. And it takes a community to raise children anymore. And thank you for the Muscatine Community School District. My kids have excelled, much better than if I were doing it alone, okay?
And, and thank you to all of you. And, and one, one thing I would like to mention is that sometimes constructive feedback can be harsh, right? But it doesn't matter. We need to accept that and take it and move forward with that. So, and we see, it's obvious that what you are doing is exactly that. So you are taking that feedback and you are trying to put a spin on that in a positive way and move forward. So thank you to all of you who are part of this process. And thank you Clint for bringing this to the table here for us to hear more about what you are doing in every building and I would say every day. So thank you for that. So with that, again, back to you again, Claire.
I'm just going to keep, I'm just going to keep talking. It's a record for me tonight, I think. All right. So I, I've got some just relatively quick updates and things I want to talk through. One, I would say, and I'd want to knock on wood, but it's been a, a pretty good start to the school year. Certainly every year has its challenges, but I, I feel like things are, are going well. Transportation's been a challenge. And, and we have, we have the number of drivers we need. It's the, it's the subs that we're short on. And one of the challenges we're running into are the, kind of the daily trips that are happening. So if we're able to cover our routes, it's a, you know, it's a junior high volleyball trip or, you know, those things that are happening during the day where, when we're short, we can't pull a driver off a route to run that trip. So that's why a lot of our messaging has been around identifying subs who have a CDL already. Because if they have that CDL, the process to get certified for buses, for passenger and, and school bus is a lot faster. That doesn't mean it's fast, it's just faster. And we've had, you know, through that outreach, we've had a number of candidates. I think we have six kind of moving forward right now. And, you know, again, those are the, the challenges as, you know, COVID's been really rampant through the community and that's hit our drivers. We've had some injuries and different things like that. And we want to make sure we're able to run every route and all of those trips, because I know those trips are valuable, right? And our, our kids that are in activities and our parents, they want to see those kids play and perform and, and do those things. So we're doing everything we can. I think tomorrow we have seven day trips. We're able to cover five of those seven, right? The couple of that aren't getting covered, we've done things like reach out to other districts where they're going and say, hey, you, we have to leave at three to be there. If you could move that time leaving to four, we could have a driver for that. And, and sometimes the districts say, no, we can't, we can't hold kids that long. So we are trying to rearrange things, trying to do everything we can to make sure our kids get to and from school safely and get to those events and activities. But that probably has been the, the biggest challenge so far this year. And it's something, again, we're going to continue to work on and continue to work with our community partners in, in getting more people through that certification process. Questions about that?
Well, I have, I have one, if, you know, in working with the other districts, can our AD, when they go to their consortium meetings, can they discuss that?
And they are talking about those things too.
We can't be the only district that's having this issue.
No, everyone's having the same issue, right? And, and sometimes those events are getting canceled on their end and not on our end, right?
I think, you know, as a consortium, maybe they should talk about starting those events at four or 4:15, something like that. So that way, these things can be alleviated.
I know they're, yes. I, I think everyone right now is struggling to get drivers, get them certified and hang on to them. And I know our ADs are talking about it. I've talked to, to our ADs. They're talking to coaches and everything we can do to, to help that process, we're going to continue to try to do.
Do we have any coaches that are CDL certified?
We do not. But one of the things we want to offer is if we have other custodians, maintenance, coaches, if they're interested in getting their CDL, we can help with that. The problem is that the school bus piece and the passenger piece is pretty easy. It's a test you study for. You take the test, you pass, you're good. The CDL takes a lot longer.
Right.
MCC is, has developed a, a CDL program, right? The challenge is they've struggled to get that up and running. The other challenge is it's either all day for like six weeks or it's half days for longer, somewhere in that range, right? So part of that is if you've got somebody who's already working, it's hard for them outside of summer, right? But we're, we're through the summer season. It wasn't an option in the summer. So some of that is how do we like start growing the pipeline? And we are, we are reaching out to our staff to say, you know, if you have a CDL, if you had it, it expired, if, and, and people who are interested in doing that, we certainly will, will try to do that.
Is the district helping with that financially as well?
That's one of the things we've talked about.
I know it's kind of got an expensive CDL.
We, we, my understanding is MCC is going to be cheaper. We don't know what that number is yet.
I'm going to play a question here, a couple of things. The CDL, is that as in depending on how many kids or as in the size of the bus or van or anything like that?
So we can only pick up on buses or on the, the mini school buses and you have to have a CDL to drive that.
So in other words, like if there was a smaller group of kids going to a trip, it's a van type?
For, for getting kids to and from school, yeah, we have to use buses.
Right.
Now to activities, depending on the activity, if it's small enough, problem is with, especially with our, our middle school, our junior high sports, you've got tons of kids out. We, we can't do a van, right? So, so that becomes a challenge.
Are there like, then I guess my third question along with that, because I know you're really trying on here and that's very appreciated, is would there be like some that are bus drivers that, like you said, that they're substitutes, but maybe instead they just do trips instead of doing the bus routes during the day?
Yeah, they're looking at moving people around. We have, we've hired, we have two people who, for lack of a better term, we call bustodians, where they, they're a custodian for most of the day, but they'll run a, a morning route and one of them runs the afternoon route. So they're, well, right now, they're running morning and afternoon and we're covering other ways with, so every advantage we can find, we're trying to do, right? And I, so I think even one of the routes that was, it was either supposed to be today or tomorrow, we had somebody covering it. Now they're out sick. So now they, you know, it's just, again, trying to, to get everything covered has been a challenge for sure. Okay, moving on. Not done yet. Wanted to update you on AEA. So we've had some, a conversation, I met with our AEA superintendents and the AEA staff last week. We do a monthly meeting. We do have two people from the state, from the state, from the Department of Ed, assigned to our AEA. One is specific to special ed, one is specific to general ed. Exactly how their roles will function and what that looks like, I think is being determined. I don't, they're, and they're very new in this. So last Thursday, those two people from the state, it was the first time they had met each other. One had been hired three weeks ago, one had been hired like within the week, right? So there's a lot of this trying to figure out what these roles are like and what they'll do. I can tell you that one of the things we're working through is the, in the past, when a law is passed, the Department of Ed sends out guidance. And essentially, the guidance became law. Whatever they told you to do, you did. And they're not necessarily sending out guidance anymore. They're sending out frequently asked questions, right? So there's not as much like, we think you need to do these things. They're kind of suggestions. And so everyone's trying to work through that. As an example, all of the new attendance work that's required by the new laws. Our district is in a great place because we've been doing this work for three years. We've got the systems in place. We've got the structures. We've had conversations with parents. We're working with the county attorney. Almost every other district in the state, they're like, what do we do? Where do we start, right? And they're not getting a lot of specific guidance yet, okay? Again, I, my hope is that as groups, as those groups get better and understand their roles and start, you know, we'll, we'll see some improvements there. That's just kind of where we're at right now. So we'll continue to see how that, how that shakes out. Streaming, we were able to stream the football game Friday night for the first time. That's through our huddle. We were able to connect it to Channel Two and MPW. Shout out to Scott Constop, Mike Henson, Tony Lokensole, put in a lot of time. And on MPW's side, they dedicated some significant resource, people resources to working with them to pull all of that together. So again, there's always going to be bugs to work out. We're certainly appreciative of Brian Mucel doing that commentary with his son Jake this past Friday. Moving forward, it will be with Ben Nitzel. So again, I think we will continue to kind of work the kinks out there. But really from that standpoint, I thought Friday night went really well. So just wanted to mention that to you. I think McKenna shared it or Kira about cell phone policy at the high school. I was just going to mention, I, I do think that's going well. I've had a number of conversations with high school teachers that, and, and some support staff that feel like it is going well. And I would say in full honesty, there are people that would not sugarcoat it to me if it was not going well, okay? I know one of the challenges, I think we had 13 staff, so you could choose between what I'll call the phone hotel. It's like a safe, you put them in there, lock it up. And then there's like a, a set of like little hanger, you just drop it in the, and everyone kind of, it hangs up and everybody puts it in there. The phone hotels came in right away. These little things did not. I know the teachers, until they get them, are requiring kids to keep phones away. If kids have them out, they're following up. So I know that's been a little bit of a challenge, but what I'm hearing, what I'm, what I'm seeing is consistency is good. Like with all things, we're going to, there'll be bumps in the road and. to, there'll be bumps in the road and things we'll have to follow up on. Staff will have to follow up on to make sure. We have to do it consistently if it's going to work, right? And Ryan's well aware of that. Again, the positive piece is what I'm hearing from teachers and from support staff is kids are doing a better job of making eye contact, engaging and, and being a part of those discussions. And I think teachers are excited about that. So I think right now, we're off to a good start and we'll continue to evaluate that and, and try to follow up with you as a board as well. And then just the last piece, we are waiting on, so the state of Iowa submits to the federal government an accountability process. And that's how schools and districts are held accountable. And there's kind of an accountability matrix that they've used in the past. They have submitted to the Department of Education at the federal level, a different accountability tool. It removes conditions for learning, which is the survey that students get. And, and part of that is because it's difficult to really get usable results from that. So being held accountable, that becomes a bit of a challenge. That was feedback the state heard. They're adding, what they're adding, so they've removed that, they added in and kind of streamlined some of the categories. So there's still growth and achievement. They're doing absenteeism as one of the factors, high school graduation rate and, and some others. So they've kind of streamlined it a little bit. I think it's a little more user friendly. We are waiting for official, like go ahead from the feds that you can use this. I think we're going to get that. I just know, I don't know exactly when that'll be. And, and part of the reason I'm telling you that is this is typically when we start to find out where schools are in the process, right? What level are they in, in terms of that accountability process? So we know when this gets approved, it's going to kind of like wipe the slate clean in some ways in terms of wherever they were previously. It will be based on their performance last year on these new criteria. We don't know what that is officially yet. But again, I do think it will be a better process and a better fit for, certainly for our district, but for, I would say, all districts in the state. So hopefully at some point here in the next days, weeks, months, we'll get that green light and, and have some more information on that. But I just wanted you to understand how that's going to reset things, start everybody over again, and it's going to be based on last year. Well, one of the pieces is growth. Well, I don't know how they're going to do growth yet, right? So kind of how does this shake out? And then who's going to support us in that work? Well, some of it's going to be these new people at the state, right? That we're still learning. So some things just to kind of work through as, as we go. And I'll, I'll try to keep you posted on that as, as that moves forward. I think I'm done for now. Questions?
Is that like on the Iowa school performance?
Yes. Right? So when you go to the school performance profile and then like whatever, you know, tier you're on, it'll tell you. And for each of the categories, you get so many points based on whatever percentage that is. So again, all of those pieces are shifting. I do think they're shifting in a positive direction. Joel, would you agree with that? You don't have to say anything right now. But I do think, I do think it's the right move. We just, we're really close, but we're not quite there yet.
What I'd like to say is on a couple of things that you mentioned, a good response from the streaming. I talked to several people that, you know, they absolutely loved how that was able to take and work. Personally, I had a little trouble, but it was because I think the spot where my home, I was having trouble with how it would stop and then start again and that. So it's my job for my household to do that. So if I talk to anybody else that has a problem with theirs, you know, I should connect them to somebody or anything?
Yeah, I think they can reach out to the district and we can filter that depending on what the issue is and try to help troubleshoot some of that. Again, that, that app is available. So there's an app you can download on your phone. Okay? Some of that, the setup piece is, is not super technical.
No.
But that will depend on your bandwidth and your cell signal at the time, right?
Yeah.
It's on MPW Channel Two. And then working with them to schedule it so you can see on the program guide, obviously. And I can tell you, Friday night when the game started, we weren't sure if it was going to work on MPW at all, right? And so it was kind of, they had like multiple scenarios of how they were going to address that. And I think we ended up on Plan C when it finally worked again. And Scott did a great job working with them to help make that happen. But then there were calls like, hey, find somebody who's got cable at home and see if it's on Channel Two because we weren't really sure if it was working yet. So again, now, you know, now that we've got that working, that connection working, you know, we can send the schedule so they can put it on the TV, you know, guide piece so you can see musky football and so on and so forth. So some other things to adjust. But yeah, I know there'll be some things we'll have to work through a little bit.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make a, a positive thank you for the deal with the phones. And needless to say, you're doing it at the high school level only right now.
Right now, you can't have them at the junior high or elementary.
Junior high, okay.
So the only place you could have them previously was the high school. And, you know, again, kind of working through, if we would enforce the policy as it was written last year, it just wasn't being done consistently. So I know that Mr. Castle, working with staff, and staff would say this was like when they're, they're building environment teams, their DDE, cell phones was a big piece of that, right? That was a big piece of the feedback. So they met as a staff, hey, what are we going to commit to? They tried some different options. And then teachers got to say, here's, here's what I want in my classroom. And then there's an expectation that's ever, that everybody's using it. And that's going to take follow up and follow through. But again, so far, so good.
Thank you.
Clint, on the streaming thing, like it's not just football, right? So-
Correct.
I like football too. But I did see on huddle, we have other activities that are streaming already.
Correct.
Maybe not quite publicizing yet because we're working out quality issues. Is that a fair statement or?
I think the big, so obviously Friday night with football and broadcast and everything was, was the big push. And then we, we will begin to publicize the other activities as they come up.
Okay. So I watched a volleyball game, so you can do that.
Yes.
So are the other, other activities on Channel Two also?
Right now, what we're talking about is just football. But again, we're, we're just kind of getting things rolling.
Sure.
Is there a cost to streaming on Channel Two?
There is not. Obviously, there's some costs involved with paying broadcasters or the commentators and some of those things. And we've been able to, and totally has reached out to community partners who've said, hey, we're, you know, we're happy to support that. So during that broadcast, they're, you know, highlighting those people who've helped fund that so that there's no cost to the district.
Any other question? No. Thank you, Clint, for the updates. So moving forward to action, possible action section of our agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the Board of Education and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a director's request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence from the agenda. The items are minutes, two bills and claims, three employment recommendations, four special education contract with CAM, Community School District, five board policies that are no minimal required by law, and six internship agreement with Augustana College. What are the wishes of the board?
Still moved?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, those of you who are in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carried. So we'll move into item H on our agenda, which is basically, we need a motion to approve the recommended 2024 Iowa School Board legislative resolutions. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll make the motion to approve the 2024 ISB legislative resolutions.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
So we do this process every year. And essentially, once you approve these, we send them to IASB. They pull all the school board responses together. And then they use that to help develop their legislative platform. And that, some of that discussion and conversation occurs during the annual meeting in November for whoever on our board is the delegate that chooses to go. So in the past, we have done student achievement, teacher recruitment and licensure, mental health, and school safety and supplemental state aid. So kind of keeping with those same themes. I would recommend those again. Doesn't mean we can't add more to that or change it. That's entirely up to you. But I still think those are areas that we need to continue to prioritize.
You're not asking for who delegate or anything like that tonight?
Not yet, no.
That's not sideways way.
It'll be a, a different discussion later on.
You can do that, Karen.
I was thinking of you. I've already done it, actually.
Okay, we have a motion, second discussion. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the recommended 2024 Iowa School Board Legislative Resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carried. Moving forward to next item is $4,048,000 School Infrastructure Sales Services and Use Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2024. The first item is to adopt the resolution appointing paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of same. This is basically a roll call vote. So any motion to accept that?
Still moved? Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Director Conard?
Aye.
Cooney?
Aye.
DeBeet?
Aye.
LaRue?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
All ayes.
So motion carried. So we move to a second item on this, which is to approve of tax of exemption certificate. Do we have a motion?
Still moved?
Second.
So we have a motion, second. Any discussion? Okay, same thing, Madam Secretary. Can we have roll call vote, please?
Director Conard?
Aye.
Cooney?
Aye.
DeBeet?
Aye.
LaRue?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you. And the third item is to approve the resolution authorizing the terms of issuance and providing for and securing the payment of school infrastructure, infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds. Do we have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Director Conard?
Aye.
Cooney?
Aye.
DeBeet?
Aye.
LaRue?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And sure.
Aye.
All ayes.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, we move into discussion and information. And the first item is financials. And Tom is ready for us.
All right, thank you. So everyone should have received their financial report today. It's been a busy week and busy weekend in finance. So tonight I have, well, we will submit our certified annual report, our special ed supplement and annual transportation report for 2024 fiscal year end. That due date is 15th, which I believe, well, actually it's already certified. So we will be doing, we've done that. And presented tonight are some highlights. So we had our audit last week, Tuesday through Friday, went well. And with the amount of federal revenue we receive, so ESER, you know what ESER is, and Title I, they were selected for some additional testing. So no significant findings in the federal part of our audit or, or overall. So very pleased with that. On page three there, I did kind of give you a revenue and expenditure summary with a three-year history. As you can see in our revenues, revenues increased 7.4%. A significant amount of interest income was received this last year. A lot of that due to our bonds that were sitting in Fund 34, although some of it is general fund interest income. So that, that's really something that I probably don't budget that we earn any interest, especially the prior, you know, two, three years before this last year. So I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. But as far as then expenditures increasing 45% since 2022, I think we can all see here that a majority of that is our facilities acquisition and construction. You know, $25 million worth of construction expenses this year. In fact, when you roll over prior years, construction in progress to what got closed out this year, we had about 20, I think it was around 23, 25 million dollars worth of construction projects that we started to capitalize this year. The baseball softball complex, the secure entrances started this, this fiscal year. So I would still have some construction in progress, of course. Jefferson, Susan Clark going on. So not as much, but again, the significant amount of expenditure increase was due to construction. So page four, I'm going to go a couple of different board financial indicators I have here tonight. The first one being our unspent authorized budget. And this is a general fund indicator. Okay? So we did increase our UAB at the end of the year. Now we're at 21%. We were at 19.4%. We're still above the recommended range, but yet we're below the state average. When you look at FY23, we're below the state average of what schools are across the state of Iowa. And I would say, you know, we get categorical funding. So what that means is like, we get revenue that we have to use for specific purposes. And if we don't use that, we have to carry it over the next year to use it. Overall, that only increased about $20,000 of additional carryover. So of the amount of money that our unspent authorized budget increased, we were getting spending authority for all of that categorical revenue and we didn't spend all of it. So that was some of the increase. Interest income was around an additional, I believe, $400,000 this last year. So, you know, that falls in miscellaneous income. Generally, miscellaneous income is dollar for dollar spending. So if we get a donation, that's going to be, there's a specific expense for that. Interest income is one of those that there is no planned expenditure for any interest income. So that was significant, I think, for us this last year. So I think this coming year, fiscal '25, is going to be a indicator, I think, that unspent authorized budget, we might not see that trend of going up anymore. It might even out or depending on, you know, where our line item budget So I'm not overly concerned that, you know, we're, we have this huge increase trend going on, because we, it has taken a small dips, but over the course of the last four years here, I guess, we have increased. On page five, another financial indicator for the board is our solvency ratio. That's a snapshot, a point-in-time measure of revenue remaining, assuming a district would close their doors at the end of the fiscal year, after gathering all of those years' revenues and paying obligations, that's what percentage is left. So the calculation you see there, and at the end of '24, we maintained at a 17%, which I would say is in decent position. We're above, not mu, not far, but we're above the target. We're probably below the state average in FY23 of school districts across the state. They average about 20%. So the importance of a solvency ratio would be, if you can think of when our, I, I've talked about this before, so we get our last state aid payment in June, but we still have expenditures in July and August, and we need to have a cash flow to be able to pay those expenditures. If we were running in a negative solvency ratio, we would be borrowing money to get through the summer, so not a good, not a good place to be in, so we're in a decent position. Cash reserve has a lot to do with solvency ratio. I generally talk about that during budget in April, but we'll, we can talk about that again at a future board meeting, so. The next one is that document I, I show probably every quarter or so. It's our published, our actual expenditures versus what is published. So you guys approve our expenditures in those, and you kind of have, we have these functional categories, instruction, support, non-instructional, and other. And then we have to make sure we are staying within those dollar amounts, and then, so what are, what happens during, during our audit, there is a whole compliance piece of the audit, one of those being, did we have a budget amendment? Yes, we did. What were our expenditures in April? Because we can't overspend at the time, you know, before we amend our budget. We amended our budget in May, we weren't over. However, when we got to June, I probably didn't anticipate some of the construction expenditures falling into that support services category, which the ones I didn't anticipate were, I'll try to explain this the best I can, leases. So we have a capital lease for all of our, we have a print management system in the district, and we started a new one in October of 2023. So we have to expend all five years, or three years of that lease upfront to capitalize that, and it's not something we, I think about doing until the end of the fiscal year, when our auditors are like, this is a capital lease, you need to, okay, so. That was part of the, my not thinking about that, so that is why we will have a comment about overspending in that support services. Now, what does that do? It gives a comment in our audit report, which I'm not pleased about, but that's all that that means. There are no tax implications with it, no, you know, we're not going to have to raise property taxes because we overspent in that category. But nonetheless, I wanted to make you aware of that, but the audit, when the auditors left here, they're like, there was no comment about this until I brought it up to them today, and they're like, yeah, that's because we only did through April, because that's, they had to make sure we didn't overspend at the end of the month of April, and we didn't, but anyway. So it will be, when they get our district-wide financials put together, it will be in that report. Okay. So that was, we looked at UAB, decent position. We looked at our solvency ratio, we're all right. The other area, our published versus actual. I did throw in a slide or a page about our self-funding health insurance. This is the, did we finish our third year? Or is it our fourth year?
Third.
Third year, and so our claims, our claims to fix costs per employee per month were at $995, an increase of about 4.3% from the prior year. However, we are funded, we did fund our health insurance fund by the amount of $1,055, so we were still funding more than what our claims ended. Now, there are what's called, you know, not accounted in here, our claims for fiscal year '24 that we paid in July and August. Those will be accounted for in our audit financials, but probably not reflected on this, but anyway, so.
On some of those funds on that, on the insurance side, you've used some funds to keep the funding down, I mean, it should have took an 8% increase.
Correct.
This additional interest income, would that be able to be applied to that?
Well, not in the general fund, but, but we are earning interest in the internal service fund here, so, and I don't, I don't have the breakdown by fund on page three, but we did earn some significant interest in the, in the internal service fund, because that carries, you guys see the balance at the end of the month, every month, so a good chunk of interest income would be kept in Fund 71 to use for, yep.
Done a great job on trying to keep those premiums down and just.
So, next step, so we'll be working on our annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFR, is that, that's what it's called. So we'll be working on that over the next month, probably in December. I want the auditors to come back here and present to you like they do to, to you guys, I'll get this audit committee together when the draft report is done, and then after the audit committee, we have a meeting, and then it'll come out to you guys before that December board meeting. So, so we're not technically done with FY24, but I would say 95% done. Feels good. I will be honest, having auditors here before the annual report is due is not something I have done in the last 24 years, and I had reservations about it, but I'm like, let's just, let's do it, and we got, big thanks to my finance department, my accounting supervisor, Rebecca Harris, who takes a brunt of questions all week. I know she put in extra time, and of course, Bonesak and from all our auditors. I enjoy working with them, they do a great job, and so that will be coming up. And then on the second page, I did not put this date on here, but I think it's important to a school board is October 1st. October 1st is count day, and that's a Tuesday this year, so count day is very important in determining our funding for '25, '26. That date is coming up, and then we're also going to be talking about those other reports that we certified today, special education supplement. There is some limited English proficiency allowance costs that we'll be talking about. I will give an overview of the annual transportation report. We did talk briefly about transportation earlier, but not financial stuff, but that is a big piece of our special education supplement, transportation for special education students, and so that's going to come into play with our special ed supplement. I'm just kind of warning you when we, when I do present in October for the SES, so. You know, December, I would say, other than these action items, I would say maybe October, November, December are really downtimes for finance, but people always ask me, oh, so how do you like having summers off too? I think, well, we don't have summers off in finance, we're still working, and this is why. I take great pride in trying to present financials and working with auditors and having a clean audit report, and I will tell you this, I feel like, this may sound crazy, but I think the audit report kind of tells our finance story, and where's our money being spent, what funds, what cat, what functional category. So I'm kind of a, I don't know what the right word is, but getting things slotted into the right account code is very important, so when we report to the state of Iowa, they understand where Muscatine schools spends their money and what functional category. We've had discussions in the past about, there was some rules trying to be passed about administrative costs. I don't think that went anywhere, I don't think we're under anything right now, but how are they going to know? They're going to know from our financial, our certified annual report that we send every year, so. Anyway, that is a little lengthy, thank you guys for staying, I appreciate it.
Thank you for the details.
We're not quite done yet, and Tom has to stand up here, so I just, I want to go back through, so as we, as Tom finished the audit process this year, so we have the audit, we have an audit committee made up of community members that also review that. It goes to you as a school board, and then it goes to the state. So there are a lot of other layers of looking at our financial pictures. Beyond that, Tom and his team have submitted information and reports, and there's a lot of work involved in that process to two different groups. One is the Governmental Finance Officers Association, and that's more like public bodies, cities, schools. And for two years, so again, for '24, 2024, received the Certificate of Excellence and Achievement in Financial Reporting. In addition to that, another group, the ASBO International, also for the second time for '23 and now '24, the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. So not only are all those first groups I talked about, but these other entities are looking at those things and looking at the information and providing that award of excellence for our district, and that's a credit to Tom and his team and the, and the work that they do. So I wanted to make sure we, we recognized him and, and the finance department for all that hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I would also say to keep in mind, like Tom said, that October 1st, and we've had some, we've had a lot of things happening at the state over the last couple of years. They have added some funding along the way, and one of the things I just want to keep in front of you and we continue to talk about, we know we've been in declining enrollment. We had 374 graduates last year, we do not have 374 kindergarteners coming in. So we know over time, right, that, that piece is slowly shrinking. That impacts our finances, that's one of the biggest impacts of that. We also know that we've had high, higher levels of state spending for education the last couple of years, right? Higher than what we've seen in the past. We also know there's more money going out to education savings accounts. We also know there's state level income tax reductions. So our spending over the next several years is going to continue to go up, our revenues are going to go down. So at some point in the near future, those are going to come to a crosshair, right? And we're going to get that impact. You are going to hear legislators talk about, you know, we're spending close to 3.8 some billion dollars on education in Iowa, right? And that's true, we do. We've also haven't met inflation for the last, I don't know how many years have we actually hit a supplemental state aid number that gets us to inflation, right? So Tom does a great job, and I know you guys ask great questions, but ultimately, we, those things we're going to have to continue to keep an eye on as we move forward, especially from a state level, because at some point, they're going to say, we can't spend any more money on education, knowing that they're spending money in a lot of other areas as well, right? So it's just something we have to keep an eye on as we move forward and continue to have conversations about our district finances and where we're headed. Again, what you heard from Tom tonight, solvency ratio, UAB, those are looking good right now, we got to keep a close eye on them, so.
Well detailed report.
And I'm done talking.
Thank you, thank you for that, thank you, appreciate. Any question for Clint or Tom? Okay, thank you. So moving forward with our agenda, we move to item B, review administrative regulations. We have several, nine of them, 506.1R1, use of education records. Second item is 506.1E1, student record access, which is a FERBA notice. And item three, 506.1E2, request for non-parent examination or copies of education records. Item four is 506.1E3, authorization for release of education records. Item five, 506.1E4, request for hearing on correction of education records. And item six, 506.1E5, request for examination of education records. And item seven, 506.1E6, letter to parent regarding receipt of subpoena. Item eight, 506.2R1, use of directory information. And item nine, 506.2E1, authorization for releasing student directory information. Any question about any of those regulations? None? Okay. So moving forward, we move into the announcements, meetings, and events. September 12, 2024, two-hour early dismissal. September 13, 2024, in-service day, no school. September 23, 2024, the joint council meeting, Muscatine School District, City Council, and the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors at 6:00 here at our school building, 29 Mulberry Avenue, and remember, the school district will be the host for this joint council meeting this time. September 30th to October 5th, Muscatine High School Homecoming Week. October 1st, 2024, the MCSD and Riverbend Food Bank, 4:00 to 5:30 here at the 2900 Mulberry Avenue. October 14, 2024, community conversations at 5:30 at the 2900 Mulberry Avenue. And October 14, 2024, our regular board meeting at 6:15 here at the boardroom at District Office, 2900 Mulberry Avenue. Anybody have anything else to add? Any other announcements? Okay. Well, if there is no more announcement, can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Make the motion to adjourn.
So we have a motion, do we have a?
Ken will take it, I'll take a second.
Okay, we have a second. Those of you who are in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, McKenna.